Anybody is here tonight, right? You're all busy doing that. Just welcome tonight, we appreciate this. I appreciate all the behind the scenes work that has been this department heads. Jill, appreciate the council being here and giving us your input tonight. And we'll have a good work session, I believe. First of all, we're gonna have dinner, though. It's back in the back, it's Cafe Rio, and Jenny has gone and gotten that worse. Would anybody like to volunteer for a prayer for that? Thank you.
Father, we're grateful for all the many blessings that thou gives us. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight for this budget work session as Harrisville City City Council members and staff. Grateful for the opportunity that we have to work, grateful for our jobs, and for the opportunity this affords us to serve the residents of Harrisville. Bless us tonight that we can be able to accomplish some things and be able to maybe provide some information to those who need it to, for better understanding. And please bless the food that might nourish and strengthen bodies and do us good that we need and rapture these things, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, the food's ready. Go ahead and eat as much as you want, because we have a lot. And then, I went back for stuff. Thanks again for being here. These guys have put some hard work into it, so council members, I appreciate all your input tonight. Everything's gonna be casual, we'll just back and forth conversations. So anytime you have a question, go ahead, take care of that right now. I'm gonna turn it over to Jenny, and she's gonna take it from here tonight.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks again, everyone, for being here tonight. Just wanna have kind of a casual discussion about, can you believe the fiscal year 2026 budget? That's what we're working on as staff. As we, just to follow up with the audit report, you should see that the 2024 fiscal audit report should be on your February agenda to get the final numbers for that year. We're just finalizing a few details with auditor, and then we should have that presented to you at your next meeting. So that's the update there. We just wanna take some time to go through the budget this evening. We feel like that is the main focus for the residents and wanting to know what's happening in the city and how we're planning to move forward with the projects that we have pulling, but also the needs that the city staff is identifying for future. So we'll just go through all of our department heads. What I've asked the department heads to do for tonight's discussion is just a high-level overview of any changes to the previous budget that we made, or they may be consistent purchases, but just identifying what we're gonna do this year. And then I have some related information to our goals and other things that I will review. And then we'll just have an open discussion, and you can ask any questions that you have regarding the budget. We have Jill here, who is doubling as our finance director and our treasurer right now, and she's doing a phenomenal job, and she's got all of our accounts available. If you have a question about what comes out of a certain GL account, we're happy to answer that for you. And so you can get an understanding of where the city's funds are distributed. So, I didn't have an order of operations. Brian, do you mind going first, and then Mark and Justin?
So as far as increases go, I'm gonna increase my equipment. In the past, I have a miscellaneous account. If it's above and beyond something, that's an annual expense to run that. An item that I would put in a miscellaneous. Jill has recommended that I don't put some of those in miscellaneous, and I put them in the appropriate account of what they should count out of. So, so increase in equipment, tools and repairs. I'd like to get a just by seven thousand dollars in event trailer, some speakers, and those trailer for the speakers and moving that part of the equipment. So there's that increase. Travel and training increase by about six thousand to get four employees to two of our conferences that we're gonna do instead of two or three of us. Increase fuel just a little bit. Aqua supplies for couple office chairs and a new computer. Youth baseball and softball increased by four thousand dollars. Last year, five thousand dollars to add additional equipment. Placed in miscellaneous account, but it was also placed in youth baseball and softball. So Jess actually did that twice. So that's why this count increased from seven thousand to twelve thousand last year. If you look at the numbers, you can see that. I don't think I'll be able to use that money by July one, so I'm gonna ask for it to get the video and baseball and softball equipment. And then also just a few adds, thirty-five hundred dollars for portable pitching man, five hundred dollars for Utop pitching screen, and then that five thousand dollars for equipment. So, and the five thousand dollars for extra equipment is to kinda stay ahead of the curve of growth. You know, Plainsville everywhere around us, including us, is getting blasted with growth. Plainsville the last couple of years has been asking to borrow helmets from people and bats, and she just doesn't have the equipment to make it work. And we're all using our own equipment to make it work. So it's just for extra equipment to hopefully stay ahead of that, so we can support the residents that we do have. Fall festival, increased a couple thousand dollars for mask gathering permit. And then the addition of court bodies. Mask gathering permit changes quite a bit as far as that goes. So we'll probably have to bring in some extra restroom facilities for that. Irrigation secondary. In the past, that annual's been about sixty-five hundred dollars. Per Jill, we're gonna increase that to fourteen thousand. She can maybe explain more. If you have questions on why, explain more on the fourteen thousand. But then also, we have been in the past taking sprinklers and irrigation supplies out of buildings and grounds. We're now gonna take that out of irrigation secondary. So we're actually gonna bump that up to sixteen-five.
The reason why that's gonna be going up is we used to have to pay property tax on pine view just at the bare minimum, and that's what that covers. So that's why. In that GL, we were constantly going way over than what was actually budgeted. So we are now going to actually break even by budgeting that in that GL for that property tax, just for the small ones that we've got.
Okay, so, and then just a few that will go into the miscellaneous. We're trying to get on a woodchip rotation for playgrounds to either add to or remove and replace every two to three years. So we'll redo the pocket park woodchips. I asked for two thousand dollars for community event growth because, just because every single year we seem to get bigger and bigger, and I just want a little bit of a fund there to make sure that we could support that. And then four thousand dollars for some zero skate that we wanna do at Harrisville Park and get rid of some grass and unneeded areas that are just kind of a water maintenance and mowing issue that we can use zero skate fairly easily. Along with miscellaneous is five thousand nine fifty-four for the potty grounds that we've been doing where we don't open the restrooms. So that total would be about twelve thousand four fifty. One thing I wanted to mention, going miscellaneous or probably buildings and grounds, our playgrounds are starting to see some wear. We talked about playgrounds in the future, just so you're aware. We've kind of identified the two main playgrounds at Harrisville Park, Harrisville West and Harrisville East. So Harrisville East is the one that just went in. Harrisville West has been in, I don't know, twelve years or so. It's starting to see some wear. Kevin, one of my guys, playground certified. Actually, it's a national certification, so he's been going through and doing some kind of our own in-house audit on some things. Has found some concerns. None of them are, you know, pressing where we probably have to budget for them this year. But in the next two, three to four years, we'll get about twenty thousand dollars' worth of replacement parts on Harrisville West one. I'd ask Kevin to break that out, kind of prioritize what he thinks would be, you know, beneficial to this year and next year, and maybe the year after. And basically, to break it down, one section is ten grand, the other one is six, and the other one is four. So we don't have to budget for any of that this year, but it is gonna be in the pipeline to start looking at replacing some of that stuff to keep it safe. And then probably the biggest one for me is, we're gonna have a capital improvements. We'd be a shop compound fence to expand our compound fence right there at the park. Ideally, that would have avoided last year, and that didn't happen. The funds weren't placed where they, I guess, where they probably should have been. So I'd like to do that compound fence this year, and maybe a chevron for event stuff next year. Some type of an outbuilding, chevros or maybe just a big, you know, single outbuilding shop with a door on it. We're running out of room for event stuff, so that's to come next year. This year will be the expansion of the shop fence. And then the only, any questions about any of that? I have some decreases, but those are the decreases that we're looking at.
Question on, can we apply for any grants for the playground?
Yeah, yeah, there are. Mayor mentioned one Monday, and we have some easy grants we can go through to county for. There are some things we can do.
The state opened up some grants this year that have never been applicable. Unfortunately, they need to be done at the end of February, and they just barely send them out like Friday's email, so it'll be, it'll be something we can try.
And then the other question, Jenny, you wanted to cover this, but in utilities line item, we added in for the spring and fall cleanup, which is about seven thousand dollars apiece, about fourteen grand a year. To some discussion on moving that to the garbage fund. And maybe you could take a little more on that. I suppose it would increase fees, and maybe if you'd take that from there.
I have that on Monday, so we'll roll over that a little bit.
Okay. That's all I've got, unless you have questions.
So you said you had some decreases, is that gonna compensate for any of these increases?
It will. Overtime, we're gonna decrease a thousand dollars. It's just something we feel like we can get away with judging on the past. Save a little bit there. We're gonna decrease the movie in the park from five thousand two eighty to three three forty, so a couple thousand dollars there. For the movies, we're gonna go from four to two north of, and then Pleasant View that we're involved with. And that, we kinda saturated every single weekend the last couple of years, and the attendance has been fairly low. So we just kinda thought, well, let's back off, let's just see, see two or three. So I'm just choosing to do two, two. See if we can get more people to the fewer movies that we've got. So that would be a little bit of savings there. That's it for now.
Okay, Mark?
On our salaries and wages line item, obviously I have a call up just the percentage stuff, the cost of living. I would like to ask to recreate our lieutenant position. Keep not a full position, but moving someone into a lieutenant position that's already in that twelve that we're budgeting for. To start training for, Dennis is expressing that he's gonna retire probably in January, so I'd like to get someone in there to start running that job.
Like a year from now?
Yeah. Yeah. Jill has done a wage study, and it's probably depending on who gets moved. But for my sergeant wage, it's about a two-dollar increase to get into that for the lieutenant position. To offset that, instead of promoting another sergeant, we'll start running master officers to run patrol shifts at night instead of sergeant. That way we'll give a look at when Dennis does leave, and we start moving things around, we'll have a better idea who's best qualified for Dennis's sergeant.
So would you renew the assistant chief position, or would that be the lieutenant?
Time would be to move the lieutenant in, but once Dennis leaves, I would replace the assistant chief, and then the lieutenant job would go forward again.
Would that be an automatic for the lieutenant?
A promotion?
Yeah.
Yeah, that kinda sticky, I didn't think that. Yeah, that does create a, either way, it would still be that two-dollar position, but it wouldn't necessarily be that lieutenant. That would be open to the outside, so yeah, I don't think that. So that's much time to kind of get ready and have a smooth transition with grants and some of the stuff that Dennis has. If we don't start training somebody, we may hit some rocky roads for a minute. Part-time salaries and wages. I have to make a, last year I neglected to add our part-time officers wages into that. So that money that was in there last year just pays for our victims advocate. That was an overlook on mine. I'm used to seeing that twenty thousand dollars for part-time and forgotten the victims advocate. So that line item's gonna go up, and it's also, if we're gonna continue the code enforcement, that needs to be added in there as well. So that will be a considerable bump for that line item. I'm paying the code enforcement out of monies with us being short on officers this year, and our part-time will cover that. So at the end, that may be over, but there'll be enough in salaries or benefits to cover those line items. It won't be a ask for more money, it will just be moving from line item to line item.
I got a question, maybe you're gonna cover on retirement. Are tier-two people getting the twenty-five-year fifty percent? Are we covering that, or are they still at twenty-five-year thirty-seven and a half percent?
That's gonna be a, Jill, because it's, that's, it depends on the employee, because you have three different tiers.
Right.
We got tier-two and then tier-two point-
Tier-two, which is the hybrid, or just the 401K side.
And we also have employees that have, well, at least one employee has taken the 401K option in the tier-two point zero.
So right now with the state, the tier-two public safety, they pay a portion of their retirement because the state hasn't. We are capped at a certain amount.
Okay, that was my question.
So if we would have opted to pay for the whole thing, we could have extended it to the higher percentage, but because we didn't, we don't get that option anymore. So anybody that is tier-two, whether it's public safety or not, they pay a certain percentage until they're old. It's not necessarily a bad thing, it kinda helps them be more invested. It's not the greatest that they pay a higher percentage with the public safety, but the state won't let us.
So I gotta back up back to, I don't know where Jill wants to put this, but we also need to put the money aside, considering that Dennis is gonna have Max vacation when he leaves, to be able to pay that out. Okay. Employee benefit line item usually, what's budgeted is, we usually use less than what's in there. We have a couple of employees that don't take the insurance, so they, we just pay the four hundred dollars out instead of the, what is it, two thousand or close to that amount? So that's a sixteen hundred dollar month times two right now, I think, savings in that line item. So that one usually comes in at the end of the year with money still in it. It's budgeted in case, you know, you never, never know if that person leaves and the next person hires, takes insurance, so you don't really wanna mess with that number too much. The court or bailiffs, I believe that's gonna, I think that's a five percent increase every year is what their contract says, so that will go up just a little bit. The only other big things, we'll ask for two cars this year, sell two cars, which is normal. That's what we usually do every year. Another thing that I would ask the council for is, our old radios are being sold to Weber County, and we sold one to Pleasant View. I would like to put that money back into equip, equipment line item next year for either to finish swapping out our rifles and shotguns, or we've been looking at a VR trainer to do de-escalation trainings and that kind of stuff with. Those should be able to get grants as well for those machines. And that's, that's the, everything else we're gonna try to keep about the same. We'll look at gas when it comes a little closer to budget season and vehicle repair budget. This has been an expensive year for our vehicle repairs. So I tried to do everything then last year with the money we had left, and it just never stopped. It's been one thing after another. So we'll take a look at those two when it gets a little closer, see where the actual budget's at.
Pretty much going with explorers?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we bought the two explorers, one of the detectives drives and Dennis drives, just because that was the only thing that was available. But we'll try to stay with the police interceptors. So the sooner we can order those, the better. Probably if you pick this out in July, if the council approves, want to order those two vehicles, I can get those, at least get them up on pretty soon. But that should be any of the big changes I had or additions. Oh, there was one other thing, sorry. Our twelfth guy is supposed to be funded by cops grant money. So just a heads up with that, the funds were frozen today. Well, depending on who you ask. I guess a judge overturned it, and it's still good until February, but it could be frozen again. But we may or may not be able to use those cop grant funds for that twelfth guy. Depending on what the government does. Excuse me? It is forty-two percent of twenty-seven dollars an hour. Somewhere around that.
Two percentage?
Yeah, it's forty-two percent of three years of salary at twenty-seven dollars an hour. Twenty-six dollars an hour, sorry, I think, twenty-six. I mean, it's a chunk of change still, but.
So that's frozen, you put your plan?
Depending on if it's close to the budget, if we're gonna keep that twelfth guy, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to budget for it. And then if we can use it, we can use it. But that's, that's the position that we didn't hire right now. It seems how we've been down so many, we used that twelfth position to pay for these other things, like code enforcement and victims advocate and stuff to get by, get through this year. So it's a sacrifice that we made that we won't hire that twelfth until July.
But actually, it works out good well now, because if they throw some money-
Very well, yeah. We've had some applications. We, we obviously, well, I guess, you guys will see Jake Holmes, your next councilman, he will swear. And then he came from North Ogden. And then we've got two brand-new out of the academy people we're opening up right now. So that's good, because that's another cheaper one instead of hiring an lateral, right?
You still playing the competitive game with the other departments?
I think that we're close, but we're not, I wouldn't say we're competitive.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you come in, well, he's hired someone.
Yeah, I mean, just so-
Try to get more money.
We just lost a guy at the county, and he got five dollars an hour to go. So the county's raised their, this isn't never-ending game.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
I mean, I spoke to the department chief a couple weeks ago, and their starting wage is thirty-one dollars an hour. And ours is twenty-six, so. It's out of control. Any questions on any more?
I have a question. Are you gonna plan on keeping code enforcement? Or is that a decision that the council's gonna have to-
Counsel. We've been using that code enforcement two different ways right now. Just so everybody's aware, when there's not a lot of code from, when we're doing our backgrounds, he's been doing our police backgrounds, and it has made a huge difference on what I see coming back and the decision we can make on who we hire, which, you know, that little bit of money we spend on backgrounds will save us money instead of hiring their own people. So it's been a good, it's been a good change, having somebody just for backing out. That's all they, all they worry about. It's very beneficial.
How many hours a week are they working?
What's that?
How many hours a week, a month, that they're working in?
Twenty, right, or?
Twenty or less, just to-
Or if he works more, one, two-week period, then it's less the next, depending on what period.
He averages probably twenty at the most a week, and twenty every two weeks.
Gotcha.
Just depends on what he's got on him.
What's necessary, yeah. Good.
Have we caught up on code enforcement?
And the crossing guard, too. We'll have to put some money in crossing guard, because I'm covering that as well, right now.
Have we caught up in code enforcement?
Uh, I don't-
Do you know?
We are in much better shape. We, I don't know that I've gotten a couple, but we're also in the quiet season.
Yeah, yeah.
It's winter, so I-
I just haven't heard anything, so.
Yeah, we haven't had a lot. We've been, we have a couple of ongoing cases that we're bringing the new code enforcement officer up to speed on. There are some that we're waiting because the property's in probate, so we can't force anything right now. But yeah, we need the council's direction on whether we wanna increase part-time wages in police and leave it with the code enforcement there, or if you wanna switch it to a different department, we'd have to allocate funds there as well. Police have been, what's that?
We increase the wages.
Yeah, we have to increase the part-time code enforcement, or the part-time police wages to continue what we're doing now.
Let me see, I'll give you a quick number over, if that's what you're asking.
I just asked harder dollars, the ballpark dollar.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what the wage is, so I don't know that.
Somewhere around twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
That'll increase?
Yeah, it'll be an increase, because it's not funded right now.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's just to maintain what we have going on right now, and once the police positions are full again.
Yeah. Hopefully, it's been six months since we thought, guys are getting burned out, it's time.
They're working healthcare, I feel you.
We're down with Jake Holmes, we're still down to, but again, that position, the second position, we've said we'll hire till July or right close to there. So we have eleven now, or ten, ten, we need.
Need twelve.
Yeah. And with the housing not coming in like it was, we should need to ask for next, this year, just that twelve.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay, we'll turn it over to Justin.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Justin.
Okay, well, mine's a little, little more, cause we've got two different types of funds, right? We have the general, general fund and then we have enterprise funds. So, um, again, as of last year, for the general fund, which really just consists of my wage, um, some cabinet payers, the general, general maintenance of all the vehicles, the general, the building and grounds, the all building and grounds, um, we're looking at, at probably about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, which is about the same numbers last year. So no decreases, no increases, um, a little slight increase for my wage, just on the cost of living. And again, we are very diligent that we do not get into what we always spend on the general maintenance of buildings. We always try to carry a little bit over from the last year. If we have to use it, we have the funds, but if we don't, we keep it in the vehicles. So again, as of, you know, trying to bring it up every year, but I'm gonna bring it up again, I mean, as of before I started at that account, it was over a million dollars that was hit onto the general fund. And now it's down to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. Uh, my next account is a, an account we made up a couple of years ago, not made up, but we, we put into practice, which is still a general fund account, but it's strictly the roads account. And the revenues, the way that we budget this account is revenues that come in on a yearly basis from B and C road funds, and then the Leaver County, uh, transportation tax that they did a couple of years ago. So roughly, um, that brings in about four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars revenue to be used for our roads and funding rate each year. That takes on the salaries of my roads lead, my roads helper, and then also a third of the salary for the assistant director. So that's, that's a small increase, just to show that, you know, the, the cost of living increase raises, raises the, we're anticipating this year. And the merits are also included in that. Last year, as we talked, we, we got into the fund balance of that account to help provide for, uh, equipment and, uh, contingency of the new public works facility. So with that being said, this year, we, I am planning with all my accounts to not get into the fund balance. Other than this one, again, we'll have to get into fund balance. The only reason we will have to get into fund balance for this year is the seventeen-fifty North Road Project. Um, we did get the federal appropriations grant, we got the six-hundred-thousand G O L grant, but with that federal appropriations grant, they wanted a hundred-and-fifty thousand in life money. We're gonna put it into the budget, we're gonna see when we get there, what we can self-perform. What we can self-perform and show that we can do that work on our own. Mine will be that it gets real back into the, the fund balance at the end of the year. It's just a place, so, um, again, that's something big we would like to use, is, um, last year, I had fifty thousand dollars in equipment purchase this year, and that was all fund balance. This year, I'm asking for twenty-five thousand and we, my guys put together quite an extensive wish list. But we've high leveled looked at what would be the most beneficial for the city. And we came up with, it's a, it's a striker, uh, self behind, walk behind striker. So we can stripe the crosswalks, the railroad crossings, small, like if we need to freshen up the parking lots, we can, we can do that. Um, it's not made for like long, big railway strategy, that will still have to come out from a third party that has the big trucks and GPS. There was that, which is about seventy-five hundred, it was eight thousand dollars, and then the other was, um, I know, I, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I know. We don't get long yet in the last.
So the self-striker in the long run, I'd say was still different?
Yes. The other one was to, the other one was seven thousand dollar piece of equipment, and it was, um, here it is. The, uh, oh, it was a, scared fired to go and grind down sidewalks that have less than an inch width. So sidewalks count, we can grind down that length, so it's a smooth transition. And that's another seven thousand dollars, so those will be the two equipment purchases out of that. Again, on the wish list and for future, just give you a heads up. We would like to buy, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment in the near future, years to come. It's a spray system that goes in the back of the trucks to spray out tar and then we can seal coat our own roads. So we're not paying other contractors to seal coat roads. Again, there's some other things I'm looking into with that is we have something with all developments that they require to seal coat the roads. After one year, one to two years of asphalt being down, they hire that out third party. Is that something maybe the city can offer? I don't know, it'll be a discussion, I'll have to, you know, go more into detail. And then makes the, helps, makes the developers help pay for that piece of equipment. Yeah, probably next year, also on the radar, we are getting better, better equipment every year, and we very much appreciate that from you guys. But as you know, we really upgraded a, a plow truck last year that we haven't quite had to use this year yet. But we will use it a lot in the future. We're finding out that our backhoe just isn't quite big enough on these bigger trucks. It's taking a little bit longer and the reach capacity isn't there. Do they fill those trucks up as safely as we can? So we are looking into a loader, um, again, is that a two or three year process looking out, yes. But again, we'll have more discussion about that at any time. So that's kind of our notes department, like I said, I, I really am trying my hardest, other than the fund balance of, the hundred-and-fifty thousand to help take through, I wanna keep within the revenue we see each year. To help us, to help build that fund balance, for whatever we don't use, you know, especially like things of interest. When the interest payments come in, those always help the fund balance. So then, the next one will be our sewer. This is gonna be a topic that's brought before council, in a council meeting here in the next. So back when I first took this position, um, we received a letter from Central Weaver Sewer that our treatment fees were a hundred-and-one thousand dollars a quarter. And so it's roughly four-hundred, four thousand dollars a year. With the growth, and they also put out a letter that they will be doing an increase in a year. And we increased it one year and we haven't increased it since. So now Jill and I are working together on getting that exact number. And we'll bring in an increase to the sewer fee that is just a pass through to Central Weaver. Nothing that we have any control over, it's just that's what they're tasked to treat the sewer. Goes out of our pipes into those and out to the treatment plant. The other portion is we are looking at doing third-party studies to increase the sewer and stormwater fees for the residents. Again, we've been asked by the state to have all of our fee assessments backed up by a third-party study. So we're going through guidance bank to help, to have them help us do those studies, so we're doing it in accordance with state law. And again, at another date that will come for you guys, council, definitely be a discussion and a vote you guys will make and decide. Right now, we're running, we're running good, but we're not running great. There's, you know, it's, it's hard to, with how it is, essentially one major disaster, and we don't have any help from any other agencies. We don't have the money to fix all the systems, all the problems. Again, we're hoping as time goes on, we can build those funds and fund equities, um, but that just takes time. And it's just looked at for a lot of years, that as long as everything stays status quo, it's great, and that's great. I love to be that way all the time, but these enterprise funds have to have some sort of fund balance and fund equity to actually operate it the way, the way it needs to. So, um, well, that's why we do the studies and see if our fees match.
In other words, probably fees.
If it would be an increase in utility fees.
Okay.
But backed by a third-party study. Right now, I mean, again, this is high level, this is the math of it all. We roughly bring in seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in revenue for the entirety of the sewer system through the year. With, like I said, right now, we're at a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars a quarter that we pass through at to Central Weaver, so.
Just give you a little thing?
So we're, we're tracking around with two employees' vehicles. The, the annual cleaning is thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We have annual manhole, um, upgrades, which is, we're, we're sealing these manholes with a polyurethane sealant, which is thirty-five thousand dollars a year. But it gives those manholes fifty more years of longevity in life. So again, like I said, I mean, we're, we're running, right at the margins that we can. You know, we don't, don't, a fund balance every year, if we have a good year, if we have expanded all the funds, you know, revenue lines, we'd like you to put twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year back into the fund balance.
So we're keeping our nose above water?
We're keeping it fairly above, but it is a little low. Same with stormwater. Stormwater is slowly increasing due to some issues prior to me working here, but also kind of didn't look at and figure it out and rectified. So again, same thing with stormwater, that roughly brings in, in revenue about three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year. After employees' wages, we're getting down to about a hundred thousand dollars between equipment purchases and other maintenance projects that we can do here without getting in the fund balance. So, like I said, this year, I, because we went into fund balance last year, because we're the, the city building, we're not going into fund balance this year. I'm just using those revenue midlines, so again, the totality of my budgets will be a decrease, not an increase than last year. Doesn't, it looks different because it doesn't show on the general fund ledger, it shows on these enterprise fund ledgers. But that, that is kind of what we're at. I am looking at, at selling off one of our diesel trucks in the stormwater, um, and replacing them with two gas trucks. So there will be some money there in equipment that I expand. As I said, that's still just a three quick yeah to revenue. And then on a good note, on the last one, should be, well, streetlights are, are actually in a, in a good position. And then garbage cans, the garbage fund is actually in the positive, they're not in the negative.
Never happened before.
Is it in the positive amount enough to not increase fees to do the spring fuck away now? I don't believe so. But that's also something Jill and I will work together and get a better handle on.
Fund the money.
Yes. Yes, then again, that's, that's another one, you know, against, when you, when we try to keep these enterprise funds with razor thin margins, which is great, because again, we don't need to overprice our residents. But we also have to pay for these services that essentially go out from these third-party companies. You know, we have no control over the cost of fuel, cost of tipping fees, cost of all that for the garbage fund, and it just, all of a sudden, we get an increase and how do we cover that?
So the spring fall cleanup, that's just a service that we're providing, um, is that something? I mean, it's really just a nicety, if we're looking at things that have to be cut, because either we raise the fees to cover the cost of their trash, or we let them haul their own trash. You know, it's kind of one of those things, I personally would rather pay to dump my own trash than everybody else's, you know? So if we do have to get down to cutting some of, something from the budget, I feel like that's something that could go.
We were discussing that the other day, thinking how can we make that more feasible for us as a city, right? And right now, they're over there by the parks, which is accessible, easy access, and if we move those and maybe, uh, had people that were only from Harrisville using those items and not Northern Utah, maybe that would make a difference.
Maybe.
We don't know how many people are using it that aren't from Harrisville either.
Right, yeah. So that was part of the, that was part of the continued discussion that we wanted to, we wanted to acknowledge, and I don't, I don't wanna.
No, that's, I mean, if there's other questions, but I kind of just high leveled, you know, I'm, I'm still going through the numbers of the revenues through the year versus expenditures, all that, so as soon as I have those numbers solidified, I'm more than willing to sit down with anybody, talk them over, go over exactly, show you penny for penny. I don't know, this is a one-time retreat, and we have another work session at a later date with more pinpointed numbers, that's again, you guys' decision. However, we wanna handle that, but I just, we were just trying to give you a high level of what, where we're working at and what we're trying to, at least, you know, with my enterprise funds, where I'm trying to fit in to, to make sure. place, you know, with my enterprise funds, where I'm trying to fit in to, to make sure that we run this, in a manner that should be there.
Can I add one more thing to what you were saying about the sewer? And that's something that's totally out of our control, that the sewer is being mandated to go from chlorine-treated water to ultraviolet light. So they have had to completely renovate the treatment plant, build new things to do that. And then eventually, when that gets done, they'll be transitioning over and we'll have to do both chlorine and ultraviolet light at the same time. We're paying for both of those until the transition is complete. So that's where those fees have increased and why, why they're there. And that's totally out of our control too.
And still has the bottom line budget?
It's past, yes.
What are we looking at next year? I mean, if you look into your magic wand.
Well, if we look into our magic wand, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year with zero homes being built. This is just staying status quo, which we know is not going to happen. It would be two percent on top of a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Every quarter.
Every quarter.
So we're approximately paying about that much a quarter. And if we're getting a two percent charge, we're going to be paying about, we'll say about eighteen, a hundred and eighteen. We're going to pay just under five hundred thousand for a year. That's if their numbers come close to what I'm anticipating. We're waiting to hear what Central Weaver is kind of leaning towards. More discussion about the sewer and the forming.
Yeah, where do we stand in our next twenty, thirty years as far as our sewer lines? Are we going to have to expand them because there will be?
Actually, Jenny, Jenny did an amazing job. What was that?
The legislature, the legislate, the newly elected legislators, I think I shared with you the map that we created showing the deficits.
So, so we do see that there is, again, now dependent on where the growth comes from. And are we able to use impact fee money? Mind you, I'm talking about, what I'm talking about, because I have to separate it from my mind. Impact fee money is so protected and so can only be used at X amount, right? For whatever we've done the studies on. So I'm just talking about total fund balance. Now what helps? Again, development always helps public works. Yes, it gives us more work. But the more homes, and especially in adult horse type situation, the condensedness of it.
Density.
The density gives us more utility fees, more width, you know, more roads to plow, more things to take care of sewer, stormwater, but it's at a, it's at a very offset level because essentially that's all revenue infrastructure that would, that would be. So again, you know, looking into our crystal ball, if we keep on trajectories that we're supposed to, we'll never, I don't ever believe we'll catch up to a point that if there was a major catastrophe and the whole city needed to be replaced with sewer, that we have a fund balance that could handle that. High level, we did a study and it was twenty-six million dollars. And I guarantee if any resident having looked at the city and saw a fund balance in an account of twenty-six million dollars, we would validate, I'll be in.
Grab a torch and pitchfork and be on front door.
But high-level emergencies, again, you know, as we see California, North Carolina, all, all, you know, the federal government, FEMA has stepped in. They, they have been good partners and continue to be. I'm sure at some level the state would step in with some funds hopefully and things of that nature. But I would like to see, you know, in, in a, in a five to ten-year window, a fund balance of close to five million dollars. That's might be a little bit closer to ten-year expectation. But it's, it, it could be done. It's, it's again, high level. And we're getting to a point, again, as I talked earlier about equipment, we're probably in a five to ten-year window with building on your building, that prices of hiring out a third-party company to come in and clean and camera our sewers every year, half the city each year, is the, the price is going to flop, that it's actually ends up in the long run. If the back truck lasts ten to fifteen years, that we save money on purchasing our own back truck and doing all, all our own cleaning and house. But again, that is a half a million dollar piece of equipment. That is not something I'm ready to purchase and we don't have the place until the new building's built anyways to store it. So I, I really agree with that. There was a lot of discussion a couple of years ago about buying that. I bring that discussion back because it's just not feasible.
Should we jump into garbage then? So we do, as Justin mentioned, we have a positive balance in the garbage service enterprise fund right now. We make monthly payments to our waste management con, to our, under our contract of waste management. And that contract is due to expire this June of 2025. So you can expect to see in the springtime, hopefully, we'll get ahold of the waste management representative and have him give a presentation to you about what that looks like. And obviously, it's under council's discretion of whether you want to enter another contract and what that looks like. Please be mindful that our recycle program is tied to our garbage services. Under the current contract, that because we participate in recycle services, they give us a discounted rate of our garbage. And so that's just something to be aware of, not necessarily a staff recommendation at this point. We haven't seen a new contract yet, but that will be forthcoming before June so that we make sure we don't have a suspended contract. To the point of the spring and fall cleanups. So the city has historically offered that to our residents because we don't have a dump facility or a green waste facility within our city boundaries. So our residents do pay to go to the Weaver transfer station. Whether that's a good or bad thing is up to your discretion. That is something that we have historically done. And a typical cleanup does cost around seventy thousand, sometimes more or less, depending on how much we pay in tipping fees. And we have recently been, the general fund has been covering that. And so we've recently been talking about what that looks like to transfer it over to an enterprise fund to cover its own services. We are hesitant as staff to make adjustments to that garbage fund because of the increase that we've done last year. But if it's something that council would like to, you know, to further investigate, we're happy to do that. With the completion of the Public Works Building, we have talked about, Meyer was kind of alluding to this. It provides us with a secured facility that we can lock the dumpsters at hours that we're not here. Where right now, they're open to the public twenty-four hours a day. Oftentimes, Brian's crew comes in in the morning and they've got garbage strewn that they use the backhoe to clean up. What that looks like is open for discussion. We could have an employee checking to make sure that every resident that's using the facility or the dumpsters is a Harrisville resident, much like we did with the sandbags. That would require us to man it. It would increase overtime for, for Public Works employees and potentially into the evening hours. Or we were constantly asked why we don't have it over a weekend where people have more time to come and use the dumpsters. So those are all things that we'd like you to consider and think about. Obviously, no decisions are being made tonight because this is just a retreat. But just be thinking about what you would like that to look like in the future. And we're, we're open, we're always trying to look for ways that we can save money for the city. And so if it's a trade-off that it costs us just as much, which I can't imagine it would, but if it costs us just as much to have an employee over there, then, then we leave it right the way it is or we remove it altogether. If you don't want to offer that, we're happy to inform the residents through our newsletter and other notifying services that we have that, that we wouldn't be offering that anymore.
Can I cut aside on this to that?
Please.
I had it open over a weekend one time and, and we just couldn't keep up with it. So keep that in mind, I mean, you'd have to have somebody here really all weekend wherever, with, with me or Justin. We just couldn't keep up on it, so I, I didn't after that the next year. When we started offering the dumpsters, the idea behind it, the thought behind it was to try to help people clean up their properties, right? We've increased the number of dumpsters a couple of years ago and it, it didn't, they just built it up. So what we see a lot, we have the green waste and then we have the, the construction or household materials. And what we're seeing now is a lot of mattresses, a lot of box springs, a lot of stuff that we don't see driving down the road. And that was kind of the intent for the dumpsters, was to clean up people's outside properties and probably take care of your own stuff on the inside and not on the city's side. But how do we manage that? How do we mandate that? I don't know, but that's, the bulk of what we're seeing now is fridges and curial cabinets and dryers and, you know, indoor house stuff that, you know, probably, I mean, I have my own opinion, but just, just know that that's kind of what we're seeing. We're seeing a lot of that, less green waste now and more in-house garbage.
That's an option, we can all just offer green waste.
But at that point, we have to regulate it too and have a list of what we will and won't accept. And somebody there making sure, so we have to have an employee there.
And green waste is way easier to pick up than, I mean, I ended up having a, a section, a drop-off section that says, you can't lift it in, look, we, we have the backhoe, we can clamp it, I'll do you the service by, I'd rather you dump it in a spot and leave it than me have to pick it up next to the dumpster the next, the next morning. But you, you come in the next day and it's just, they use it. I mean, they put it where it's supposed to be, but it's, it's a lot.
It is. And I do know residents that save up everything all year for, and bring it.
It's cheaper than going to the transportation, that's what they do.
And so it's, it's in a way misused, in my opinion, for some.
Well, we've come to that point in time of a theme this year, send views. And it's becoming a, a, you know, and now a red light saying, stop, don't take anybody. It's like you say, it comes to different cities now to drop off.
That was.
Yeah, many construction companies coming to drop off.
That was my experience at another agency is it was, again, they had the facility, they were able to lock them up every night. It was, it was very much only the residents of that city. You had to bring your, the utility bill, your address, private license, you know, proof of residency.
That's where Bountiful is. You go to the dump, you gotta show your ID that you live in Bountiful.
No, I moved there. So I moved, you know, again. But as we talked, does that save us money? Because now we do have to have an agency managing that, we have strict hours. You know, do we stay till eight, till nine, you know?
Well, let's be honest, city doesn't take it, it's going to end up in a church dumpster.
No, we would rather have their non-working fridge in our dumpster or on the side of their house for five years.
Again, do the code enforcement.
Outside, you know, and that's court enforcement issue.
I mean, we have, right now, I visibly know of one mattress sitting out on the roadway. Well, not on the roadway, off the roadway. But I'm like, the developer owns that lamp, do I send a guy out there and pick it up and haul it to one of our dumpsters? Then we're paying for it. Do I get after the developer who hasn't started to develop the lamp?
Yeah, it's his property, I would think. Right?
That's what I do.
Again, I, I don't, there's always those areas of frustration.
While we're talking garbage too, I don't know if you've seen in the cabin, but at the parks, we've seen a big increase of people using our dumpsters. We put signs up, we had gates on them when we first put those enclosures up and then they throw it over the top and leave it anyway. We're leaving it outside, so we take the gates off in hopes they put it in and that they overfill it. And we're dealing two hundred and fifty dollars for motor charge every month, every week.
And, and that's again, another agency that I know very well. They have discontinued their recycling at every home. But they've gone and got recycle bins that they've strategically placed throughout the city. Well, they're all filled up within the first ten minutes of them being done. And then they have residents all complaining and fighting and yelling because they can't recycle their materials anymore. So I don't know, you know, again, when we talk about this new contract of what, what do we do? How do we make this work? It, it needs to be very open and transparent to the citizens, to the residents. You have to be willing to pay for what you want. If you want this, then, then that's what it costs.
Well, there's another aspect of education too, and we've had these treatments before from the waste management company. The mentality of most residents is it goes in the garbage. I don't care which garbage goes in, it just goes away. And so, you know, doesn't matter where the garbage goes, it just gets picked up. And that's their mentality is I'm not going to separate it and, you know, and do that. So we're paying for something that is not being used per se. And I realize that we're savings, but that's got to be weighed into this whole thing someplace.
And we, we can look into whatever the council directs us to, to look into. So if we, if you want us to look and see if there's vouchers with Weaver County that would be cheaper for us to offer to our residents, we can, we can do whatever your, your direction is to, to address this. And we just bring that to your attention that this is the year because it's typically a five-year contract with them. So we want to bring it to your attention so you have some time to do your own assessments, to talk to your, the residents that you interact with. If you want to get their feedback, that's completely up to you. And we can, we can, we have tried to do surveys in the past. We don't usually get a lot of participation with those, but it, we, we are willing to exhaust every resource that the city has. But to Justin's point, the ultimate decision lies with you to decide whether the service we're providing is worth the cost to the residents. So, well, we, we can talk garbage all night. But we do have a couple of other things, for the sake of time, and I'm mindful that I don't want to wear you guys out too much tonight. So we'll just go through a couple of other things. These, both of my items are related to the goals that we set in 2024 and then new projected goals that we would be recommending for 2025. But just a couple of points prior, the nine million dollar bond unraveling for that, based on the referendum that was filed, we will be, we, staff will be meeting with our financial advisor in the first week of February to get the information on what we need to do to unravel that nine million dollars. So it looks like I'll have a report back to you at the next council meeting on what that might look like in detail. We do have a deadline that we want to make sure that we're ahead of. And so that's just a reminder that we'll be doing that in the next month or two. The, with the completion of the Public Works Building, which is tentatively in March at this time, we're also wrapping up the expenditures from that project. Those will be issued from the capital projects line item in the budget. And there will be a need for a final amendment in the June amendments that we do, once we get the final numbers back in and what those costs will be for that. So just kind of a reminder there on the projections that we knew were coming and then just what the final numbers will end up being. We have completed, as was mentioned earlier, or maybe not, the Parks Facilities Plan and its analysis has been completed. And we're finalizing the draft. It won't quite be ready for you in February. We've identified the projected increase in the Parks Impact Fee. And it will be presented to you once we meet the state code requiring the noticing and holding public hearings. There were some changes in the state law and we're getting some feedback from the legal team, from Brody, on what we need to do to make sure that we're in compliance with state laws. on what we need to do to make sure that we're in compliance with state laws. We adopt those new park impact fees. The contracted planning services are working out fairly well for the admin team. It has freed up my schedule a little bit and allowed me to focus more on grant opportunities with the GOEO grant that we submitted and also networking for some potential economic and commercial development options. I'm still highly involved in a lot of the planning discussions, but being able to have a secondary resource to have people set up meetings or answer questions has been extremely helpful. So I just wanted to report back on that, it's been really good for that. And as far as the admin, but we're watching that line item fairly closely in the building budget. And well, it's too early for me to tell exactly how much. There is a, the ability for us to charge some of that to the development. So some of the development costs should be able to cover that, some of the contracted pricing for that. But that is working out really well. Justin mentioned that we are inquiring to get bids from Science Bank to do our utility rate analysis. That was actually a goal in 2024 with the state's focus on making sure that our fees are in alignment with the services that we're providing. We are anxious to make sure that we have the appropriate third-party studies to back up those fee schedules. So those would be related to stormwater, sewer, streetlights, hydrants, garbage services. And we also, as you sit as the board members of the Four Mile Special Service District, we are engaging them and asking for help to complete a study to determine the assessments for the property owners that live within those districts and those neighborhoods to make sure that we can cover the costs. To date, the general fund has had to supplement the Four Mile Service District because they haven't brought in enough. As of right now, because we don't have a fee, we don't know exactly what to charge them. They've been paying their connection fees for their.
Meter?
Yeah, thank you, meters. Thank you very much. So that that is another study that we're engaging in. And you should see their standards come in front of you in the next month, couple of months.
So of course, we're talking about these fees, these, you know, these assessments that have to be going on, what do we charge? What do we, you know, what's it coming out of our budget because the state is saying this is a mandate?
So the studies will be paid for out of those appropriate fees. So the stormwater utility fee will pay for the study. They're an average between $6,000 to $10,000 for us to run a study typically. That's an average, but we'll get back. I don't know if their fees have increased, it's been a while since we've, we did. In relationship to impact fee studies, that's a pretty good gauge. Six to $10,000 would be my best guess on that. Talking, continuing our conversation about fees, we completed our business license fee study last year. And we implemented our new fee schedule. We did get a little bit of kickback, but not a lot of negative feedback from businesses as we did our renewal process for the last, they renewed in January of this year. And our revenue tripled in that account from our anticipated revenue that we had. So there will be some positive adjustments to your amended budget in June as well because we've collected more revenue than we anticipated. We do it on a moderate income housing kind of just report. We anticipate new legislation coming out of the session, the session is going on now, regarding deed restriction options for owner-occupied units and to help with attainable housing needs. Also, external accessory dwelling units have been highly discussed where you, a detached garage can be turned into an accessory dwelling unit. And some of the preliminary conversation regarding that would be, they should be allowed in any zone with 10,000 square foot lots or larger. So that would be our R110 corridor acre lots. The governor's, state of the state addressed the, you may, if you listened, you heard him with the hashtag #BuildHere. He is pushing infrastructure and building and continuing with the industry in Utah. They recently unveiled the Utah Housing Strategic Plan, Phase One. It is only going out, I believe, to select audiences and we are one of them and you are selected officials. And so I'd be happy to forward that information with the link on if you would like to read what that strategic plan looks like. So I can send that out to you. And last but not least, what the plan moving forward and what, how it's related to truth and taxation for this year. So we anticipate we will be holding truth and taxation again, but we are actually not proposing a property tax increase beyond the possibility of maintaining our certified tax rate for this next fiscal year. We are anticipating the issuance of approximately 200 building permits for Dixon Creek Park. They have completed, that's 1,300 north over on Washington Boulevard. They are ready to put up their escrow. Obviously, not all 200 units will be built at once, but we anticipate there will be an increase in our building permits next year that will finally help balance out our budget without it being solely related to property taxes. And the early indications of our current fiscal year budget are showing our building permit revenue at approximately 80% of what our projections were, and we're a little over 50% of the year. So we're ahead of what we anticipated in our building permits. So we wanted to just remind you that we feel it's important for us to go through the truth and taxation process. We have to identify whether we're going through it or not early on before we're towards the end of our budget. And so, but we want to make sure that you know and you're aware so that you can let residents or get their feedback that we're not proposing an increase beyond. And we're hopeful that with possible interest rates declining, as we've been holding air breath for that, that the possibility of the valuation of homes, if it decreases that, then we can naturally recapture our certified tax rate without having to impose it. So we just want to keep an eye on that. We don't want to necessarily impose a property tax increase for this year. And it'd even be helpful if we decreased it, but that we'll know more about in the future. And either way, we have to go through truth and taxation to make any adjustment to the certified tax rate, up or down, we have to go through that. So we will know more when we get our audit back. And we're not suggesting that we let it decrease, but we just want you to know what all of your options are. So that's our report on everything that we have up going. We're not anticipating adding any staff at this point. We'll be wrapping up the architectural design for the Public Safety and City Hall in the next few months. And our continued, so we listed as goals for 2025 and obviously we can talk about these more in February. We do, some of the things to meet our moderate income housing report are adopting a capital improvement plan. The department heads, we met monthly and went through that. It's in my ballpark now. I prioritize getting that in front of you to adopt our new capital improvement plan. And we've been working with the Planning Commission about an attainable housing ordinance. And we, that will come to you in the next few months after they work through their work session. We held a work session in January, we'll have another one in February as we get feedback from the Planning Commissioners and their recommendation to you for adoption or proposed adoption of that. We will continue the utility rate analysis. We're hopeful that we'll have a groundbreaking soon, at least by the end of this fiscal year. And we have our transportation projects listed for 2026, no, excuse me, 2025 plus. And the general obdination election for the Public Safety and City Hall building on the ballot in November for whether or not we move forward on that project. And that will come before you, obviously you vote on that in August if you want that to go on the ballot in November. And it is a municipal election year as well, as a reminder there. So we have, that's a lot of information that we've thrown at you and it's been well over an hour of having you sit in the seats. But if there are any questions you have regarding the budget, we are happy to answer those. If you are concerned about some general ledger budget item that you are curious what we pay out of that line item, we are happy to respond.
What's, what's that audit the state does to see if we're in compliance with the affordable housing situation in the city?
The moderate income housing report requirement.
And I have, I have some of the hard-noser's asking, what would happen to us if we ignored it?
They actually fine the cities now and you have to put a daily contribution to the Olean Walker Housing Fund for every day that you are out of compliance. It started off as being kind of a idle threat that they would impose some kind of a fine. And then the next year, they put a lump sum fine, if I remember. I didn't want to take a chance on this, I don't pay a fine, so we always made sure we were in compliance. But I think it was a lump sum when it first came out. And then the newest legislation is a daily fine that you pay to the Olean Walker Fund for main housing.
Same for any size city or?
Any, any city required to do the moderate income housing report. So cities of less than 5,000 population are not required to do the moderate income housing report. So, but any city that is required to have that would be required to pay that fine until you come into compliance. So if that means you have to re-adopt your strategies, which takes a couple of months, goes through the public hearing process of Planning Commission, you could potentially be out.
And what, what is our most current belief our, our population is?
7,000.
By that seven?
By around 7,000. There was a discrepancy in the 2020, 2021 census. And so we're right, we call ourselves about 7,000. And growing. With our 1200 entitled units that we have in Harrisville to be built, that's already been approved through the process.
That would keep them off our back.
Then let's ask for something else.
Other questions that you might be getting that we can answer?
You mentioned the groundbreaking of Ben Lomond, is there another builder looking?
Yes, Flagship Homes. We've met with them two or three times and they have told me that they are, they have purchased the property. So they're not under contract, they've actually purchased it. That's the information.
I heard they put stuff out, they did.
They have, they have put out bids, they're trying to get under contract with an excavation company and they want a ground. So they submitted a new plat for 2A that's just the southern portion with the spine road that they will be building just as you approved. And then they will be proposing changes to the north section of that, that you'll come back through the concept plan. We'll have you review what they're proposing there. And the Planning Commission would approve a commercial site plan for anything that they propose on the north side of that. But they are working to get their engineers' cost estimate, their SWIP filed with the state and a pre-construction meeting with the city.
And they haven't suggested a PID?
They have not asked for a PID at today.
Scott Hurtland, who was the lender, also approached me in the fall and asked if we wanted to do a, not a groundbreaking, but a ceremony for the new playground and restroom and that over there with the Millennium Park. So I guess he's still involved in it, he said that we'll do it this spring. So I don't know if that'll be part of that process, I don't know how.
We did mention that to the new property owner too, I think they'll be wanting to be involved in that. Thank you for mentioning parks because to be back off of Brian's request for funds to cover the porta potties. Once we get the park impact fee analysis and facilities plans and analysis adopted, we have identified camera systems at all the parks that we need, which would be a new improvement and qualify under the impact fee to put in. But I am just gonna be bold here, I'm very hesitant to open the new bathrooms at Millennium Park until we have a camera system in place. It takes 90 days for that impact fee to go into the debt after we complete the adoption. So it may be coming back to you to ask, oh, get a bid for Proage on how we could put up a camera system. It may be worth the city's dollars to pay to have a camera system put up before we open those restrooms. That is why we've left them closed unless you give us indication that you want it different.
Well, the letting will stay closed. We don't have, we're still waiting on the amount, how we can get us power to transform it or whatever. But yeah, there's.
So some other things, and you don't have to decide, obviously, we're not making decisions tonight, but just we'll be, we'll be looking for that direction by April 1st to know what we want restrooms of this year. But we have put in the budget what it would cost us to cover the porta potties. Any other budget questions for us?
We came with a whole lot of questions, can you help?
Well, we hope we've answered them through our presentations. That's, that's our goal, is to let you know what changes are being made, what we anticipate. Our focus needs to be to be in compliance and also anything that you give us that you want to give direction to us to do.
I think there needs to be more discussion of what to do with the, with our dumpsters. I mean, it's out of, it's out of control and we're wasting money. At the same time, I don't know what we have, I've been directed investment interest, I'm saying there's gonna be green waste and green waste.
We could, I mean, we could do a nominal fee, you know, $5 per truckload or whatever because the transfer station is a minimum of $10 plus poundage, right? So they're still saving money if we're doing that.
Yeah, but it's never become, to me, we've become a.
The hard thing with that, and I totally agree, you would have to actually set that up at City Hall if they'd have to come by a pass.
Yeah, it's okay.
It's, it's a lot more work than you.
So then, then.
Just make them bad money.
Again. I think there's a way. I'm not gonna step on toes and take anything away. I think there's a way with the new Public Works Facility and the minimal amount, it could be an overtime, you know, because again, we can possibly adjust one person's schedule that week. But hey, instead of coming in at 6:30, you come in, you know, a few hours later, but you stay that later now.
And along with that, it's also our other dumpsters, like we've been talking about.
Those.
And I think rather than taking the time down, I think it's a discussion.
I think we're gonna fix those dumpsters and put a gate on the parks.
Do you think?
The big dumpsters?
Yeah, well, no, the dumpsters, the smaller ones.
Well, we have gates on them and they do.
I mean, it's in front of the park where you can't, you can't offer.
Yeah, we talked about that at one time.
Is there an issue with like the developers and they have their dumpsters out there, people putting them in there? Could they, couldn't those developers get back at us or just those people?
No, they just go after those people if they catch them. I think every dumpster has a sticker on it that says, we can find up to X amount of dollars if we can. Again, it doesn't matter, when there's a dumpster, somebody's. But but that's the catch 22. Would you rather that we, thank goodness, maybe 90% of it goes in the dumpster instead of just out in some old buddy's open field, right off the highway?
You know, that's, that's the ultimate thing, but at the same time, it's the people, it's the people outside of our city that are taking advantage.
Yeah.
Both, both commercial, and it is commercial, as well as it is private. You know, we have a dumpster, let's go through our stuff. Not that it's a bad thing, but somebody's gonna have to.
But somebody always has to.
You could advertise a little bit different and say that, look, this is just for outside.
Green waste.
To clean up your yards. Help her out, I don't know.
But if you have a toilet outside, it's gonna go in that dumpster.
Yeah. Yeah.
I really. Take it from the house.
Be like, this was my lawn ornament.
That's right, this was my lawn ornament, that toilet's gotta get in the dumpster.
I do actually know somebody who has a tub out there full of flowers.
If we wanna get any, any bit of handle on it, I think probably moving it is the best. Fence area, we can ban handle and somebody better to monitor.
We can require someone to bring proof of residence for others.
Maybe see a 30, 40% increase if you lock it up.
Always one thing or something, yeah.
We could try that and see how it reduces the fees if you'd like to before we eliminate it.
One year, yeah.
We will, we have the date set for March.
April.
April, um, for our next spring cleanup. The likelihood will be in our Public Works Building by that date.
21st, April 21st.
Yeah, so we will be in the Public Works.
We will be in the Public Works.
By the 21st of April.
We're camping out.
Maybe going amongst out there.
We could try it. What we would need for staff is we need to be able to start advertising this. So let's put it on your agenda for February so that you can make a formal decision on it. And then, uh, we will implement whatever you collectively decided that meeting. And if it's to try the new system out, we'll try it in April. And if it doesn't save us anything, we will bring it back to your, for your discussion and for the fall.
You know, it's been fairly consistent the last few years, $6,000, $7,000 is every spring, every fall. For us that.
We'll, we'll make sure we get a formal decision from you on that.
If it drops down to three, we'll build it.
I, I know we need to be very careful and mindful when we do advertise. We do have to say no refrigerators, ham, no tires, just because of the, the new state laws of allowing to dispose of said.
Does that include paints and oils and solvents?
Advertisement and signs don't mean anything, it'll be.
No, I, I understand. I'm, I'm just saying, we, for our own, for our own city protection.
We can do a, we can do a better job of that in the newsletter for sure.
And again, what helps out is somebody's always there and they can say, hey, no, you've gotta take that back out.
And that gets to, if we have somebody monitoring it and they see a truckload full of paint, that's gonna be.
Batteries end up in the bottom of the green waste, tires end up in the bottom of the green waste.
Sorry. Can't norb.
If batteries start not firing, the load's smaller, so what you're probably.
All right, well, that, if you don't have any more discussion items for us for the budget, we will be, so future, we'll be having a budget work session prior to your tentative budget adoption in May, unless you request you'd like another one. And that would have to be collectively in a council meeting during May or council follow-up. Let Jack and I know that if you would like to have another budget work session, we, we won't plan another one. Um, and then just to save the date, if you're interested in attending the LEAK conference.
The what?
The LEAK conference in April. It will be held.
The night?
The 16th, 17th, and 18th.
Okay.
That's in St. George. So please let me know pretty quickly if you'd like to attend that so I can get a hotel booked for you. Those are the dates of that conference. And I'll turn it back over to the mayor, right, exactly, I hate you.
Look at that, you're good. Thank you all for being here tonight, thank you for all the information you brought and the discussion. And hopefully that'll get the wheels turning for making decisions later on in the year. And I just feel like we're, we're making progress. Sometimes it feels like we're sledging along, but we are making progress and I appreciate everyone. And your excuse to go, thank you.